Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our special meeting for January 27, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. Ms. Berger, good evening. If you would call Ron first.
This is Mayor Lowry.
Here.
Councilman Vice Mayor.
Me, me, I'm here.
Councilwoman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilman Rodwell.
Here.
And Councilman Lindsay.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. And tonight's invocation will be done by Vice Mayor Graham.
Father, we thank you for this wonderful city that we live in. Thank you for all the great friends and neighbors that you've blessed us with. We ask that you be with us, council, as we make decisions affecting the city, help us make the correct decisions to benefit the city and our residents. We ask you to be with our deputies and our firefighters, that they will be safe and be able to return home to their families. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, action on the minutes, none tonight. Communications. Under communications, we will be doing the interview for the applicants for the two vacant council seats. And what we've done, for some of you, I don't know if you've done this before, it seems on the YouTube channels, we'll do the interviews in public, you know, because you guys would, if you were to be appointed, you would be representing the audience members in the city as well. So, we'll do those right here, one at a time. So, I just was gonna do them in alphabetical order, if that was okay with council, from the first name. So, let me pull these back up. I know, I'm just getting to that file. So, all right, so, Ms. Plant, if you need... You can stay there if you want, or you can come up here, it doesn't matter, it's me. If council's okay with that.
Yeah.
Let's bring them all up here, because we got some in the back row.
Okay.
If that's okay, I mean?
Yeah, that's fine. Most definitely. Good evening, Mr. Row.
Good evening.
So, what we usually do is we just start random, we'll just let each council member start random for each candidate. So, does anybody wanna go first? Any questions or comments or feedback from Ms. Plants? If not, I will.
You're the mayor, you go ahead.
All right, so, thank you for applying, I appreciate that, we appreciate that. Just if you don't mind, just give me a little bit of the reason, I mean, I've got your hat, but why, why you think now's a good time for you to be on city council?
Um, I'm done with school now, so I can have more time to focus. My kids are a little older, so I have more time to focus on what's going on in the city and be more involved.
What, what do you envision this job to be?
Um, it's gonna be a lot, just fine, because I'm a nurse right now, so I can do it. I'm very multi-pass winged oriented, so I can do that. But, um, just helping build the city better and get better and do what we can.
Where are you senior for the last five years from now?
Um, hopefully with all the identity building and being filled with witnesses and inspiring.
Again, thank you for the application, for preparing for us tonight. What is your, what's the most important thing that you would like to accomplish if you was appointed to council?
Um...
To you, important thing to you.
Well, I have four kids, so just keeping a firm line down and watching out for our kids and...
I was looking at the deputy.
Not that I could be able to do it myself.
Right.
Just, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Here we go. How long have you been a resident of New繁?
Uh, so, nineteen, twenty.
Okay, so you've seen, you've seen us in our, in our worst and as we've continued to improve over the last ten, four years.
And then you go around to the rest of the world, I lived here too, so. But, for sure, my house I'm in now for nineteen years, so.
Oh, wow, awesome, for nineteen years.
Yep.
All right, all right, anything else, anyone? All right, well, thank you very much, just, you can have a seat and we'll continue on. All right, so next would be Ben. Ben, how do you say your last name, because I didn't wanna twist it up?
Bon.
Uh, it's Bon.
Bon?
Bon. It's been said lots of different ways.
Okay, that's why I just said Ben.
It's no, that can say.
All right, well, thank you for taking the time out of your day to come and talk with us. Let someone else start off? Anyone? Someone?
I'm looking for his application.
Is Mr. Graham going to go?
No, I'm looking for his application.
Uh, I'll ask you the same question as I did Amanda, yes. The, what is the one most important thing you think the city to do, needs to do, or you would like to accomplish if you were appointed to council?
That's a big question. You know, in this day and age with what's going on in both the federal and state government, me personally, I just think it's important for local city governments to be able to stand between their citizens and the federal or state government needed, because there is that provision in our constitution, to be able to safeguard their freedoms and their liberties that we have today. So, that would be, um, probably the one thing that I hope to accomplish is if we'd be able to come up with any arguments that we get all beyond the past that would allow our citizens to continue to have freedoms and liberties that they do today.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Redwell, you wanna go next?
Hmm, yes.
So, same question, I mean, what, 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 you wanted to apply for this, I mean, what, what's the drive behind it?
Um, just, you know, wanting to serve my community. I obviously, you know, my application is, you know, my interest in both a business in the city as well as I live in the city, um, we have a family here, um, so, just to be able to try and use my gifts and abilities to serve the community. And what would make me proud of, and you'd be a good place to be in my business.
I got one more, if you don't mind, since you mentioned it. So, you got, you have, you own a small enterprise, so, how long have you guys been there now? It's been, what, ten years?
We've been, we've been in business, this'll be our sixteenth year, I guess.
Okay.
We've been in, um, up there for fourteen years.
Okay.
I think it's what, about fourteen years.
All right, I'll follow you.
I've had dealings with Ben for years, so I, that doesn't disqualify me, I'm one of his customers, does it?
Okay. That's a disappointment, it's gonna be tough.
Can't get anybody. I didn't know we had houses on New繁 Pike in the city.
You have one?
Yeah.
One, you're it. Lucky you, huh?
Yeah, right.
No, I have no questions.
All right, Ms. Nowakowski?
What would, what main improvement would you like to see in the city?
Well, I guess in what regard?
Something that you think is a concern to the citizens and yourself?
Um, probably first, just again, top of my list, it probably, they kinda go hand in hand, it's just probably crime and drug use, just being able to figure out what we can do to, you know, help, obviously the Sheriff's Department, as a community, what we can do to try and reduce both of those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nowakowski, Mr. Redwell?
I'm gonna piggyback off of Linda's question. When you say drug use and crime, um, you know, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, but the, the crime in New繁 is not that bad compared to other local cities. You know, I mean, you don't have crime anywhere, no matter what you do, you can have police forces on every corner. Do, how do you feel, um, you know, I mean, you say reduce it, what, what, in what ways? I mean, I see that you, you serve on, on the board of your church, so you're obviously involved with a lot of the local community, you're, you're, uh, Vice Chair and Chair, well, fairly impressive. So, but, I mean, what do you see, is it, is it single home families, is it too much downtime for parents and kids, I mean, what is...
As far as...
Just, you know, the drug use that we, you know?
Well, if you wanna, you wanna talk drug use?
I'm talking in particular in this city, in this, I mean, you know, because...
In the city, I mean, it's gonna be, it's...
Um, because Chief Trustee will tell you, I mean, our, his, his calls for, for, uh, drug overdoses has dropped dramatically over the last year. Narcan is, you know, we're actually seeing Narcan back, because we're just not using it before the expiration date, so...
That's great.
Um, I mean, I think that goes to, to our, our police force and our citizens passing the levy to have us, have a, a strong police force. My question is, what, what else could we do to build on upon that, do you think?
Um, you know, I, I think a lot goes back to just figuring out what you can do to strengthen families.
Okay.
I think, uh, a lot of our issues, society, societ, uh, societally, that's not even the right term.
I know what you're trying to say. I'm right there with you.
Uh, go back to, I think, break down the families, so, you know, what we can do as a community to try and, uh, help our families.
More city outreach, more getting...
City outreach, just, you know, we have little league, little league, little league and that stuff going, there's, uh, you know, a lot of things come into play, but I think a lot of the drug use really comes back to this, and charities and families and, you know, so, just anything we can do as a city to help support that.
Anything else? You got it, Mr. Redwell? Yes, sir. Anyone else, anything else? All right, sir, we appreciate it, thank you very much. And then moving on to Bill Cook, sir.
Hey, you're last, cause it went way young.
I know, well, I had it bound as B.
Oh, okay.
So, all right, good evening, sir, nice to see you again, thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
It's been a regular home for a while.
Help yourself. All right, you wanna start, Mr. Graham?
I have no questions, if you...
All right, Mr. Redwell?
I, you know, I truly have none for Bill, I mean, I've served with Bill for the last year, so...
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I will say, on a personal note, I've gotten to know him over the last year, and my, uh, my thoughts of him prior to being on council to now is vastly different than what, what I had. So, I apologize for stereotyping you, but if I got on council.
I have no questions here. Just a couple of comments, really, Mr. Cook, I mean, this is, if, if you were to be appointed, what, this would be like your third time in your lifespan being on council? Because you were the mayor back in, what, eighties?
Somewhere in the fifty, sixties.
Okay, so, well, just for, just for the audience, I mean, what do you wanna get back up here for?
Primarily, the past two years, I think the city has made great strides, in fact, with the additions of several new council members, the fact that we have worked rather diligently and expeditiously with the administration. We've got a bank account that probably near $6 million. This goes a long way from the $125 bank account that I remember back. We also have improved a lot of things in this city. Number one, tearing down the school, the old water tower that's come down, the fact that we now have $400,000 grant for a shelter house, that's gonna help us, the fact that we're getting more streets done. However, I would like to see a lot more enforcement out of some of our, I guess the word is planning department, as far as the neighborhoods. We have a lot of businesses that are operating in residential areas, we have a lot of trash sitting out, there were very few sidewalks clean over the past couple of seasons. Making a tour of the town, we've had trash cans still sitting out, I think the ordinance reached a day before and the day after. I would like to see much additional communication between city administration and council.
Thank you very much, good answer. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cook, appreciate it, as always, sir. Next, Ms. Eggleston. Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
Good.
Likewise. All right, um, thank you for applying, and thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. I'll just kinda, I'll start off on this one, if it's okay, I'll just kinda ask you the same question, I mean, obviously you've just left council seat, why do you wanna come back?
Over the past two, three years, well, two years, the communication between council members and administration has improved vastly, and I wanna see that continue. I think we've gotten more accomplished as a council, being able to communicate and not having to deal with individual agendas, and I would like to see that continue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Graham?
I've worked with her for a couple of years, I pretty much know about her.
I've known her all her life.
Makes her...
Sorry, babe. All right, anything, Mr. Redwell?
I, I mean, I should've asked Mr. Cook this as well, did we ever get clarif, I mean, I know you guys petitioned to be on the ballot for November, did we ever get clarification from the Board of Elections as to why your application was denied, or...
Mine, I made an error on the back of two of my petitions, and when I turned them and I asked them, he was looking them over, and I asked him to ensure that I did everything right, and he assured me that I had, and I was prepared, there was two places I didn't see.
Okay. Good?
Yep.
Mr. Jones, anything?
I have no questions for Ms. Eggleston now.
No, no one else? All right, thank you very much, ma'am, appreciate it. All right, next, Mrs. Gable, please. Good evening.
Who?
Samantha Gable, if I'm saying that right.
I missed that application.
Very good. You what?
She was the first one.
Do you have hers?
I don't know, with me, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And then there's that, I'll let you read over that, and then I'll, uh, thank you for coming, we appreciate it. We'll, I start last, or Mr. Redwell, or let you start on this one first?
Please, I'm trying to find her resume.
Oh, okay, Mr. Graham?
Samantha, you have attended a number of council meetings, and you said you have issues hearing some of the council members and some of the audience. You said that if you can't see them, you can't hear them. You think you would be able to hear not facing the council, but I, right now, I can barely see Mr. Lindsay.
Disability isn't a reason to exclude someone, and I actually think I bring, I can bring, um, a minority view to this council, that is, I feel, and they're likely at this point. I, with technology, I do very well, unless I state that I'm hearing impaired or deaf, most people in the community would have no clue. I, I teach sign language, the library, and I walk into my class, and before people get there, I make sure I speak to every single person, because I speak like everyone else here, okay? And when I say, "I'm deaf," then, no, I spoke to you, because it's hard for them to understand and break down stereotypes, just like it is for everyone else. It's hard for children to do it, because they are used to mainstream media, okay? You know what? My phone will pick up everybody's, every single person's voice here, if we use it properly, with my, the equipment that I have.
Okay.
Okay? So, me being disabled and having, being deaf, that is not a disability that this council should take into account for anything. It's, it's just who I am, and you know what, it makes me more aware of others and what other people, and diversities that they, um, are up against as well.
I just wanted to make sure we'd not interfere with your ability to, to conduct business here. No, I'm not, I meant, no offense.
Okay. I, I am always open to talk about my disability with anyone. I think that by talking about it, it opens up other people's views and, and their understanding of what deaf people are like. I didn't grow up in a, in a deaf culture, I didn't go deaf until I was in my thirties. I woke up one day with a paralyzed vocal cord, and for three years, I had no voice. The doctors gave me steroid supplement back, and one of the very rare side effects of steroid juice is permanent hearing loss. By the time they realize it, it's too late. So, that's how I lost my hearing, and that's why I speak normal, if there's such thing as normal in society. But, so, I, I think I represent my noise, so, it's how I look at things, and I, I like to speak up for those people who are afraid or just can't speak up for themselves, because they have their voice, so. And I think those are the people that I would be representing, and, and the diverse, we, we, we have a very diverse city here, you know? I mean, it's, we have a lot of Caucasian Americans, and we have a lot of Mexican Americans, and, you know, I think everybody as a whole needs to be represented, and I, I'm not Mexican American, and I will claim to be, but I think I understand what it's like being a minority, and so, I think I can learn from people in that minority.
You said, "I don't remember the term you used, you felt left out." How do you feel?
Say again?
You, "I don't remember the exact term you used, but you felt left out, ignored?"
I feel ignored?
Yes.
I, I think a lot of people, I think a lot of minorities feel ignored and left out and left behind, and, um, the funny thing is, is when, I, I went to college, and I took sign language in college, and that's how I learned to sign, um, and my teacher used to tell me I was the worst signer in the class. Well, I lost my voice in my very last sign semester, okay, in my last sign classes, I lost my voice. And my teacher, she said, "I don't know how you went from the worst signer in the class to best signer in the class, but you know what it was?" And then when, I, I was forced to use facial expression. Before then, I was a little goofy, and I was, I am not really goofy, but you know what? What I've learned in life is sometimes, it's okay to be goofy. It's okay to stand up there and, and say, you know what, this is who I am. Like it or not, this is who I am, and this is what I represent, and I am very well grounded in who I am and what I represent, and I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid, so.
Thank you.
Good? Anyone wanna go next?
Thank you for doing your application, although I missed it and did not print it out, and I apologize, I read, just read it. The question I have is the same I asked the other ones, what would you like to see accomplished if you were seated on council?
Well, I, I would like to see the tax base increase, okay? I'd like to see tax base increase, but I would like to not get it from, directly from tax payers...
Increasing taxes.
...by increasing one and a half percent. I would like to increase the tax base by increasing what we do in this community. So, I, you know, I, my, my late husband, I've been with it for fifteen years, and my late husband was an assistant city manager, so I come with a lot of experience from him. You know, I, I understand city D E G, I understand, you know, a lot about what councilmen do on an everyday basis. I understand that, you know, those people who pound your email are not necessarily the majority, but just the noisy minority with voice, okay? But I believe that they need treated with empathy, and they need, they need to be explained things to, you know, in a courteous way, and I think that's one of the things I agree with the late. You know, I, I remember one time, when my husband was at work, somebody chose a resident, chose to call our personal home and complain about the city. Well, the phone was in my name, and it was in my name for a reason, because it wasn't his phone, it was my phone. And so, I answered the phone, and where we lived, there was an airport, and this person complained because they worked third shift and they slept first shift, and the airport created noise, and I simply said to them, "How long have you lived in your house?" And he goes, "Well, eight years." I said, "Was the airport there before you moved in?" "Well, yes." "Did you expect the airport to roll up and move because you moved and bought your home?" "Well, no." I said, "Okay, do you understand why you're talking about that? The airport's still doing business, just because you choose to work third shift, you need to buy some air plugs." He don't wanna, kinda goes, "No, nobody's ever explained it to me that way." And he goes, "They always go sugarcoat everything and push it under the rug." I'm like, "Not really, Mark, I can't sugarcoat it." And you know what? If you just explain the things to people, you know what, I think they understand, people are more intelligent than people they're credited for.
Great, thank you.
I'll go next, if you don't mind, Mr. Redwell?
No, sir.
All right, same question, really, I mean, you kinda hit on it with Dale a little bit, just, I mean, and thank you again for the application, what's your drive behind, I mean, like, what's your drive, why would you like to be on council? What's some of the things that interest you so much that you would wanna join?
One, I don't think everybody in this town is represented fairly in here, okay? And only says, "Be the change you want to see in the world," and I am that change. I am that person who is willing to step up and say, "You know what, I don't think this is mine. I wanna change things. I want things to be equal for all, not just, you know, allow, allow minority or not allow majority. We need, we need fairness, we need diversity, we need to recognize everyone in a fair, just, and nice way, like..."
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Mr. Redwell or Ms. Nowakowski?
I just, I, I mean, I've, I've had this question for years, what is the high-class hookers society?
I was gonna ask that, but I didn't hear.
What's, what is high-class hookers?
What is high-class hookers?
Yes. I see it all the time on Facebook, I'm like, this is...
Oh, sir, okay, so, high-class hookers, we, appreciate homeless. Next year, we put out 350 hats for the homeless and needy in our community, and what we do stays right here in Quack County, okay? Not only did we put out 350 hats, but we also put out 13 sleeping mats. A sleeping mat takes approximately 200 hours to put one out, and we didn't work too long, along with the 350 hats. We're not a nonprofit, we operate as a nonprofit, but we're not a nonprofit, we will open our works to anyone, for anybody to inspect, we don't care, we have no hidden secrets, no hidden agendas or anything. We, we really work to help the needy homeless in our community, you notice those people who, that nobody wants to recognize. So, we, you know what, you, I believe that, I, I started the high-class hookers, okay? And, yeah, you know why I call it that? It's a marketing thing. When I called it the pressure club, nobody wanted to be part of it. You give it a lucky name, and everybody wants to be part of it. So, you know, it's the thing, "Oh, my gosh, I'm a high-class hooker." And you, you know, it's really funny, when you walk up to a pastor, because I, I work with pastors a lot, to get our, you know, our product out to where it goes, and I... And I, and they go, "Well, I'm Pastor Jones." I say, "I'm, I'm Sam, I'm a hooker." And they look at me, "You know, I know you preach in that pulpit, not to judge. And you're not, you're not listening to yourself." And then they look at me and I said, "I appreciate for the homeless." And he goes, "Oh, my gosh." And it's that taken back thing. But you know what? It's, as long as you're doing what's right, you never be embarrassed.
Oh, no.
So, I have no problem saying, "I'm a High Class Hooker. I appreciate the homeless." So, that's what I do. I started it, I founded it, I'm president of the hookers and, um, we just, we do things. We, we help people in our community. So...
You're in the know.
I'm in the know now.
And you can't come in volunteer fit line. We will teach you to crochet.
Yeah.
I want to see that.
Well, I mean, how do you, I mean, I, because I've seen, I've seen, I mean, in Springfield, I see. Is it the ones with the paper bag or the, the plastic bags or is it actual crochet?
So, the mats?
Yes.
The mats are made with the, um, like, all microthread bags?
Yes, yep.
So, what the, what they do is they get, they create a barrier on the ground to get the homeless off the ground so they're not freezing cold or burning hot, okay? And when the, when that surface is wet, it keeps them dry. So, when, when, let's say, for example, the urban strip field in a tent city, okay?
Yep, just buy one today.
They don't have to use as many blankets because they're not subjected to that coldness of the ground. So, by lifting them off that ground, um, they can conserve a few more blankets. They use them for other things and, and spread them out. So...
Thank you. You've answered a long time question.
You good, sir?
Yes, sir.
Did you have something else?
I just wanted to ask you if, whether you're appointed or not tonight. I'd like to speak with you after our meeting's over about your projects.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Snookowski, did you have anything?
Do you have any particular aspect of the city that you would like to see improved?
You know, I mean, councilman has that been to. And I know this is one of those one things that nobody else talked about. It's that, you know, thing. So, you know, one of the things that people always come here and talk about, the roads need to be repaired.
Yeah.
And every time I hear, "We have a 20-year road plan." I don't know if 20 years is good enough. I'd love to see it better. I would, I would like to see it better. But you can't just say, "We need to make it better." You know what? You have to find a resolution to make it better. You have to fang a plan. You have to come together. You have to work together and create that. You have to have the money to make it happen. Um, so it's not just saying, "Let's just do it." It doesn't happen that way, I'm doing that. But I think a lot of residents would be happier if the roads were repaired more, you know, more frequently, okay? Um, but we, we would have to find a resolution for that. It's not going to happen overnight. It may not happen in a year or two. But I, I think in respectable amount of time, it, it could be resolved. And, but in order to do that, you're going to have to create that bigger tax base for all of that. Thank you.
Are you, are you good, Mr. Snookowski?
No, I said, "Thank you."
Thank you.
How would you increase that tax base?
Well, how would I increase tax base? Well, what? You have to generate business and you have to, um, you have to entice manufacturing of some sort. And I know small cities hate that. "Oh, we don't want to be anything more than just a small town." You know what? I think, I think unless we increase tax, taxes on our residents, we don't have options. I, I think increasing taxes on residents is ridiculous. Our, our economy is, is blundering right now. And it's, you know, we, it's, it just keeps everything, the cost of our living going up. And for that, we can't increase our taxes too. So, the only way to do it is to create business and manufacturing. And so, somehow that has to happen. And, um, I, I, um, I have a lot of friends who have been city managers or who have been helping in, in market studies, with a lot of experience. And, and I could call on them and say, "Hey, you know, how do you, how do you entice this?" You know, I have a lot of friends who have had jobs in community development. How do you entice this? How do you make this happen? Share with me. Um, so, it's, you know, it's, it's, but I'm reaching out and, and pulling things in. Things can happen. Things happen.
You good?
I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else, any follow-ups?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much, man. Appreciate it. And Mr. Kress, finally. Mr. Kress, you're the last one. Um, just in case, actually, I, I don't know if I mentioned this at the beginning. We did have a seventh member, uh, Mr. Shammy, and he backed out. You can sit down, Mr. Kress. Uh, he backed out like, uh, for personal reasons, so he won't be here tonight. Good evening, Mr. Kress, how are you?
Good evening. Good.
All right, thank you for taking the time to join us, as everyone else did. Um, does anybody want to start?
I'll start.
All right.
Thank you for coming and doing the application, appearing tonight. The, uh, same question I've asked everybody else. What is your main objective? You were selected for council. What would you like to see happen in the city?
Along with most everybody else, well, I think pretty much everybody's here on the main topic is we need more businesses here in town. We see all of them, it's no secret, um, to have a business here in town, to entice people, to bring their businesses in here. City limits, we've got a lot of businesses that just kind of take a lot of them outside of the limits, whether it be a neighborhood park lane or midway, or a car up here. But businesses, I think, are the key. Because without thriving downtown, even though it's nice and quaint as ours is, the city would die eventually. It's just the fact of the civics in town, which you can't sustain it, the facts of justice in the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Snook, would you like to go?
You said in here, you say, "It's sad to see the town not at its full potential."
Correct.
What would you do to help the city reach its full potential?
Good question. Um, I think it goes along with the businesses. We have some businesses that we've seen move places. We've had a couple move outside of the city limits. Um, I think we go back to trying to entice those businesses that are coming here. Those businesses that are here, we need to do more reaching, outreach with them to get them to be more involved in the community. Um, I, I know we have a few that do that, but not everybody really. I think it goes above and beyond what they do. Some, whether it be financial, some areas that they don't want to. But as a city, we need to find out why that engagement is not there.
I'll go next, if you guys don't mind.
Same question. Uh, I mean, other than what you've already said, I mean, what's your, what's the push that what makes you want to be a beer? I mean, I think you kind of already answered it, but I'll just stick with the same question.
Sure.
What's the drive?
Yeah, absolutely, that's fair. Um, well, I've, I've talked to most of you outside of here and I've talked to former council members that have been here before. And every time I've talked to most of them, I've had no less than at least four say, "You should put in for this." And I never have and I just decided that, you know, there's an opportunity, there's a void that needs to be filled. So, I'm going to step up to this point and throw my hat and ring if you will. You know, we've lived here for, man, 10 years now. 10 years this June, something like that. 10 years this year, 2022, that we've lived here in town. I grew up in a small town. That's one way more than Troy, just up the road. So, I, I understand what a small town can mean and to be there, the heart of America. I mean, we started with small towns and that's how we became the country that we are. So, I think to be able to partake in that and to get the community more involved. I, I know some organizations that aren't involved, I think could be involved more than anybody. So, that would be my...
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Redwall, you want to go next?
Um, you said you were a, uh, previous law enforcement officer. What, what, where at?
A couple different places. Uh, when I first got out of police academy, I was at Good Sam Hospitals, a special meeting place I was down there, uh, which was...
Interesting.
Very interesting. It's by its own, um...
Entertainment.
Entertainment for most nights, yeah. From there, I also worked in some small towns because the way the state laws affected, working full-time at the hospital, even though the P E did not hold our commissions with the state law. So, at the same time, I had volunteered at other local municipal houses. The first one was the R P E, um, until that police department went away. And then I moved on to Bradford P E. And from Bradford P E, I was still working at Good Sam full-time. These were all free, called Dollar Year Council. And from there, I ended up getting the full-time job that held my commission at Wright State. And that's what's been rewarding my career as a Wright State retired guy there as a sergeant.
Well, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Redwall. Uh, Mr. Snookowski?
You suggested that we need to develop. What kinds of things? How do you see that happen?
As far as the economic development or...
That and the council.
Economic development, there's a wide range of things. I mean, throw a garden, a garden border, there's something I think that we can do as a city. To give you some specifics, we have one festival a year, everybody knows that, it's no big secret. Why don't we have a second one? We have a Christmas parade that just doesn't quite do well, you know? We have a farmer's market that does. Okay, I've been there. I've talked to some vendors that have started there and have left there because they didn't get the business that they thought they had. So, I think there's room for improvement. Some of those that are already here, I think there's room for improvement to bring in newer ventures for the businesses and things of that. As far as council goes, quite honestly, I see the same people up here a lot. And it's no offense to the people that are here because you stepped up. You did what those of us that have been in good time are trying to do, that's be a part of the solution. The problem is, is we don't have enough. What happens when we're all blind? And then who's going to be there? Who's going to be able to step up and shake you back? Those of you that are on board, at some point, you're going to get tired of it. Or you're just going to be term-living it out. And then, if you can't build those and run the city, that's not going to be good. So, if you will, the term fresh blood, fresh faces, I think, is very advantageous to the council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kress. Appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you. Thanks.
Is that the last one?
Yeah, that'd be the last one, so...
Could only miss one, man.
What's that?
Only missed one, man.
All right. All right, so, uh, what will, I'll, I'll just jump here, what will happen next? So, what we'll do is, we'll finish what's left on the agenda, which would be, um, comments from members of the public. But after, what will happen after that is, since there's no resolutions or notices because of the special meeting tonight, we'll go down to other business. We'll move to an executive session for council to discuss the applicants. So, if you're new to that, you'll have to step out of the building. I mean, you're welcome to sit on the front porch, but it's pretty cold. I would sit in your cars. I mean, once we come out of executive session, we'll come out and let you guys know we're back in regular session. And then we'll, uh, council will make its decision. So, at this time, it is comments from members of the public. If anybody has anything, they can go to the podium, your name and address, and try to keep it to five minutes, if possible, please.
Am I allowed to ask questions?
Uh, I don't see, I guess that...
Like, of the applicants?
They're citizens, you can ask them, I don't know if they'll answer you.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's fair. I mean, they're trying to be your council member. But that's, again, that's up to them. I, I'm not telling them they have to answer.
Okay. Uh, Brandy Mullet, 522 Hamilton Avenue. Um, I guess I'll start at the top of the list. Um, Amanda, one question that I had for you is, obviously, um, I don't know if you were in here for the first part of the conversation, but I'm a nurse as well. I know the, the struggles that we face in trying to get through school and all of that. Uh, what level of involvement have you had in city council and city dealings prior to now?
Um, I watch it. So, it's, I tend to watch it. I would do this all the time.
Okay, cool. I do the same thing sometimes. Um, I'm going to butcher your name. I know you said it and I...
Ben, let's go with Ben.
Ben. Um, I was curious if you would be willing to provide some information about what specifically do you feel the citizens of New Carlyle need protected against, um, in terms of state and federal government regulations?
So, uh, you want a specific example? I can speculate on what they're going to try and take away from us, you know, in the future, but, uh, something...
Have we heard of the tip?
Recently, the constitutional governor executive orders, um...
Referring to COVID-19?
Right.
Okay. Um, so you, you feel that the citizens of New Carlyle and a small, small-town local government need specific protections against those types of things?
If there's an overreach by farmers' state or federal government, that's, you know, the constitution gives that responsibility to smaller local governments.
Okay.
There's a definitely that goes between, it gives the sheriff's department that ability to do that for their citizens. So, um, it's not something that's exercised on a regular basis.
Okay. Um, do you have any specific experience with dealing with patients who are diagnosed with COVID-19?
I'm not a medical professional.
Okay. Um, Mr. Cook, all I'm going to say is thank you for your very, very, very many years of dedication and service. You have done this city proud over and over and over again. Your heart has always been in the right place. And I trust, full, fully trust that you have always had the best interests of New Carlyle at heart.
And we've lived here my whole life. Born, raised here. Yes, this is my home. I intend to live here a few more years that I have left and hopefully I can still make a difference.
Well, let's hope it's more than just a few years. Um, Peggy, same goes for you. I want to thank you for your service up to this point. Um, it's unfortunate that things kind of shook out the way that they did in, in the petition and getting on the ballot for November. But, you know, I think you've been a good voice of reason. Um, and personally, for, for me, we need more women on council. Um, we, you know, us ladies need some representation, so, um...
I missed your application.
I'm sorry.
Twist that.
I didn't, I seriously didn't hear you. I got to get the new job in the works, Dan. I got stuff to do. Um, Ms. Graybill, somewhat recently, um, at a council meeting, you were somewhat antagonistic towards Mayor Lowry. And I'm just curious about how, you know, there's seven, seven seats to fill up there. And with the difference of opinions that is going to come up, um, just curious, how do you plan to kind of rein it in? Emotions-wise?
If that's a word, it's not one person, it's seven people working as a unit, okay? It's still a compromise, you know, in bringing things, what's important to you, what you're willing to negotiate, what you're not willing to negotiate. And, and together, all of that comes in a, a council. It's not that, a council is also built to be the front of the city too. And you, you need that unified front. And you can have struggles in the back. And, you know, here, when you go speak in front of council, you don't just have struggle in the back, you're right there in front of everyone. So, maybe you have something, you, you speak right there from the pulpit. And so, yeah, I, I'm willing to stand my ground and say what's right and what's wrong. And to that, that's who I am. I always speak my mind and I don't care if this is the most popular of the minute. It'll be what's right.
You also mentioned, um, obviously with the state of things, how they've been for the last two-plus years, um, that the economy is blundering. And I don't dispute that one bit. However, based on that information, how do you think the city of New Carlyle can entice new businesses to come when everyone is our, I mean...
New businesses are still taking off, okay? Um, if you, people are still facing small businesses left and right. Because they're getting away from wanting to work for other people, okay? You can't depend on having a job, working for someone else because those jobs just close up shop. I mean, you, you may work in a restaurant today and that restaurant may close up tomorrow because they hate finding out. So, where's that leave you? But if you open your own place and you run your own business, then, you know what? You depend on yourself. And so, you want those, those businesses to flourish. And you know, we, New Carlyle has the chance to bring those... we, New Carlisle has the chance to bring those businesses here, and possibly some bigger businesses as well.
Okay, so, this is a statement, not a question, realistically, um, I don't anticipate that even several small businesses in the city of New Carlisle are going to significantly, that is the key word, significantly, impact our tax revenue. At this point in time, the city of New Carlisle is pretty much landlocked, we don't have anywhere that is able to be developed into a large manufacturing-type business, case in point, the, what is it, Old Dominion down there by Wendy's on 235, I mean, we don't have a space like that that is within city limits, that we're gonna create or draw in some kind of big business that's gonna skyrocket our tax revenue, that's just the reality. Um, I completely agree that it cannot be carried on the shoulders of the citizens, we cannot keep jacking up our income tax rates on citizens, because people are gonna leave, I mean, people are already unhappy enough that it's, what, 1.5? So, okay. Um, man, I was on such a roll, I remembered everything I wanted to remember until I got to you, Mr. Cress, um.
Should have been me and Les.
I know. Um.
You're welcome.
I don't disagree with your point about, you know, fresh blood, if you will, um, new faces, and I, I agree that for a long time, the same folks have been the ones that have stepped up and have filled these roles, respectfully, and no offense to you personally, because I don't know you, I've never met you before in my life, but, touching on my previous point, I don't think the city of New Carlisle needs more representation from white males. If we could, I mean, I would love to see a person of color, um, a minority, you know, somebody that is going to represent, and we just don't have that, we just don't have those applicants.
We, I think we all would, but we, you know, we can't force them, you know, you know.
I agree.
You can lift a fork to water, but you can't make a drink.
I know.
Um, we, we've had this conversation, all of us up here have had this, we would love a, a, a more diverse council, but, unfortunately, when you get white males that only apply in the occasional female.
I remembered my other point.
Ah, sorry. Sorry.
No, this is a good one, this is a good one. So, um, I have been on the Parks and Recreation Board since 2017 or 18, I can't remember, um, we have not had a great success with keeping and retaining members, however, we do have a full board now, and some of the things that you were talking about, like the festival, and, you know, we have one, why not do another one, why not do some outreach-type things, those are all in the works, um, so that is definitely something that we are trying to put together with the help of our planning director, um, to try to get some outreach going, and if you have any suggestions, tips, tricks, anything, we are more than welcome to hear those from you. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, ma'am, anyone else? Questions, comments, feedback?
If I may make a comment.
Sir.
The comment about not needing representation from any more white males, our job is to look at the best qualified candidate, not what color they are, what sex they are, that's irrelevant, we have to look for the best.
The only thing, though, is, you know, that I, you know, I can.
The best candidate, Brandy.
I can say with a relative amount of confidence that me, being a single white childless female, my values and what I, you know, what I hold dear may or may not align with that of a, I'm not trying to be mean.
White male?
Middle-aged or older white male, I'm sorry, but it's just not.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Mr. Grim.
I'm done.
Thank you, anyone else, before we move forward? All right, so now we'll drop down, no resolutions or ordinances tonight, we are under the business, so I will need a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
So, motion by Mr. Grim, second by Mr. Lindsey, and Mr. Vice Mayor, I apologize.
Nope.
The second was Lindsey? All right, Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Councilman Grim, sorry, Vice Mayor Grim, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna take a couple meetings.
Hey, you will do.
Councilman Nowakowski, yes. Councilman Rodwall?
Yes.
And Councilman?
Yes.
Motion to move to executive session.
All right, this is where we're moving.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to, uh, go back into regular session.
Second.
So, motion by Mr. Lindsey, second by Mr. Vice Mayor Grim.
All right, Councilman Nowakowski, yes. Councilman Rodwall?
Yes.
Councilman Lindsey?
Yes.
Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Grim?
Yes.
Motion's accepted, 5-0.
All right, so, what we'll do now is, we'll open it up to any council member that would like to make a motion to appoint a candidate, so-and-so, to city council, and then they can, you know, he can make a motion for one, and so on, there could be three, four motions, and then, once your second and you're done, we'll close nominations, and then she'll go through the list in order that they were received, and call for a vote for each candidate that was nominated, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, I nominate Ben Bonn, Bonn, for the open seat on city council for the duration of the four-year term.
I have a second.
Second.
Oh, I thought, oh.
So, motion by Mr. Lindsey for Mr. Bonn, and second by Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Bill Cook.
Second. Motion by Ms. Nowakowski for Bill Cook, and second by Mr. Rodwall.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I nominate Tom Cress for the open seat, city council.
I'm gonna make sure she's got a.
Yeah.
Grim first, second Lindsey?
Yes. For Mr. Cress.
I mean, to spit on him, I thought he was done talking.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Peggy Agelston for the open council seat.
Good motion by Mr. Rodwall, he was second. Who do we have so far, just so I?
Um, we have Mr. Bonn, Mr. Cook, Mr. Cress, and, uh, just, I didn't hear a second for Agelston, yes.
Oh, do you have a second? Mr. Agelston? I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, I move to nominate Samantha, and I'm sorry, I forgot her last name.
Graybill.
Graybill?
Gray, gray, right? Like the color gray.
Graybill, okay, I nominate her for the open seat on city council, for the expired, for the rest of the term.
I'll second it.
So, we've got Bonn, Cook, Cress, Agelston, Graybill.
Anyone else? All right, we need a motion to close nominations, sir, wait, hold on, did you have something else?
Do you have something?
I was gonna nominate Amanda Black.
Go ahead.
Her counsel.
My second.
Second was Lindsey.
Yes. Ma'am, the question, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Did we nominate everybody, Miss Burner, Mrs. Burner?
Uh.
Five people? Six? One, one, two, three, four?
Six, yes.
Five, six?
So, they're all on there.
Five people?
Six.
Six, six.
Six, okay, and all had seconds?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
Second, I'm Mr. Vice Mayor, sorry, I just called him.
I'm gonna put my coat on here in a minute, I can't freeze.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on closing the nominations?
Yes, please.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Quickly.
Councilman Rodwall?
Closing nominations.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Rodwall? Councilman Lindsey?
Yes.
Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grim?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Move this along.
Okay, so now we'll go back up to the top, and we will start with Mr. Bonn, I had a first from Lindsey, and a second from Vice Mayor Grim, so we'll start with Councilman Nowakowski.
No.
Okay. Councilman Rodwall?
No.
Councilman Lindsey?
Yes.
Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
And Councilman Grim?
Yes.
All right. So that motion passes three to two. So he takes our first.
What's that?
They can see that passed.
Yep.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So we'll move on for our second.
Correct.
All right, and I'll go down the list, I'll start with Mr. Bill Cook, I had a first from Nowakowski, and a second from Rodwall, so I will start with Councilman Lindsey.
No.
Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Grim?
No.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Yes.
And Councilman Rodwall?
Yes.
All right, so that is three to two. That motion also passes.
All right.
That concludes it.
That would conclude it, so, congratulations, Ben and Bill.
I heard you paperwork, you have to vote for the rest of the people.
No, the seats are filled.
Let it die for lack of motion, or lack.
Because seats are filled.
Yeah, those.
Well, you got the other law director here, just let's.
But they were all nominated, so you didn't have to vote.
Let's ask him.
There are no vacancies left, so.
Exactly. I don't understand that, if you had everybody nominated, and somebody voted three-two, what happens if we vote all of them and somebody gets a unanimous vote?
There's nothing to vote on.
There's nothing to vote on, there's no seats left.
But we didn't get to vote on all of the candidates.
I know, because the, because two have already passed, so there's no, there's no other seats to go after. We'll take Jake's advice on this one.
Yeah, the seats are already filled, there are no more seats to.
Okay, so do you want to bring them both up, and read them at the same time, or one at a time?
Uh, same time's fine.
Gentlemen, if you could come up, please.
Should they, where do you want us?
Whatever's best for you, I mean, uh, I would do it probably here, because the camera's probably picking up there the last time.
Okay.
I'll be out of the way.
Where are we going?
I was gonna say, is it that?
They're gonna pick up there.
Go this way?
Yeah.
I'm gonna get out of the way.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so go ahead, raise your right hand, and you're gonna repeat our campaign, I'll go slow, okay? Um, so I'll do it, I, and then you can state your name, and then you can state your name, and then we'll go on together, sound good? All right, so I, state your name.
Ben Bonn.
William Cook.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And the Charter of the City of New Carlisle, Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of New Carlisle, Ohio.
I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of member of council.
The duties of a member of council.
For the City of New Carlisle, Ohio.
For the City of New Carlisle, Ohio.
For the term ending December 31st, 2025.
The term ending December 31st? 31st?
31st, 2025, to which I have been.
To which I have been appointed.
Correct, to which I have been appointed, I'll change that on this form, okay?
You need to sign those.
Yes, please.
Congratulations, New Carlisle. Ms. Burner, would you make copies of those for both of them?
Yeah.
That's burning my locks, is your mind on? Oh, okay, okay, great, okay.
So they'll be in there.
All right, Ben, you are welcome to sit at that end or this end. Mr. Cook, the opposite one, I mean, you won't be up there very long, we're not done.
Okay.
Congratulations.
All right, so with that being said, we are back in, we are in regular session, uh, we're still under other business, um, Ms. Nowakowski, is there anything you wanted to go over tonight?
I would like to submit my resignation, effective at the end of the meeting.
Okay. And, um, so with that being said, this, this whole process will start over again, she's announced it, but it won't take place till midnight, so the next council meeting is when we will officially announce it publicly, and obviously you've heard it, but, uh, according to our charter and how it plays out, so once, at our next meeting, we'll announce it, and we'll start this whole process over again for her seats, and she is resigning, so, um, Ms. Nowakowski, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and thank you for your time and knowledge and effort for city council.
Thank you.
And if I may say something to all those who are not appointed tonight, please go through the process again.
Reply.
Some of you.
Next, next moment.
We had some excellent, uh, excellent applicants this time, I expect to see excellent applicants again next time.
You said, sir, anyone else?
Uh, I would just like to thank Ms. Nowakowski for her service to the city, and, uh, I did work with her a little bit, uh, in the last term.
Anyone else, anything? Reggie, anything you want to say tonight, before we roll?
I just appreciate this opportunity and, um, to serve, and, um, do the best that I can, and, uh, hopefully we can work together really well, I think we'll be able to, and, uh, so I'm very humbled and honored to have this chance.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cook, anything?
I think I will take on Mr. Cobb's job.
We're not gonna have to call the squad, are we?
Cause trouble.
Call the police, Bill.
All right, with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Vice Mayor, second by Mr. Lindsey.
All right, Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grim?
Yes.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Rodwall?
Yes.
And then Councilman Lindsey?
Yes.